Hi, everybody. Today is Tuesday, August 8th. The time is 6:00 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Coppell City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the conclusion of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce that we were moving into work session. Thank you for your patience, and I'll be back out shortly. Good afternoon. The time is 6:31 PM. We have recessed from executive session, and we are moving into work session in the first-floor conference room, and the public is invited to join us. Thank you very much.
So you can have mine?
Huh?
You can have mine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was only like 20. I did too, but I'm totally interested.
All right, everybody. The time's 6:32 PM. We're moving into work session. We've got three items on the agenda, or two items on the agenda, excuse me. First one is a discussion regarding the agenda items. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
I do know.
All right, we can move on then.
I don't.
Consent agenda okay with everybody? Yeah.
All right. Let me ask about item D. Mr. Steer.
Yes, sir.
So... If someone wanted a carport at this time, what do they have to go through?
The permitting process.
Okay, and then... The restriction that is currently in place or the ordinance? How many or what percentage of the houses are able to meet that requirement of the setback?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
And it's still going to be the way this is, correct?
Correct.
So if they don't meet that requirement, can they get one?
They can seek a variance through the Board of Adjustment, but they have to provide a hardship, or they could go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the City Council, through the PV process if, say, it's already a planned development district.
Is it set to expire if we don't approve this?
The current ordinance? The new ordinance is effective tomorrow.
Oh, the carport?
For the accessory structures, the carports won't be... The specific regulations related to carports won't be included.
Okay, so if we didn't approve D... Is there an issue?
We wouldn't have specific regulations related to carports.
But it's already in place, right?
Currently, it's in place, but the previous ordinance would repeal the whole section and replace it with the accessory structure regulations that don't have carport regulations included.
I'm trying to... I didn't know why we asked to repeal the entire section.
Right.
So we did.
Yes, sir.
So could I ask you a question on that?
Credit.
So most of the areas of town that don't have garages are the older parts of town, that the original homes. And they typically don't have HOAs, correct?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure? A lot of the newer developments since the '90s, they all have HOAs, and they don't allow carports because they already have garages. So you want to think about the people who don't have garages. You know, how do they protect their investments, i.e. cars? So that's something I want to consider when we look at this.
Bijou.
So my question is, what is some setting on this month or next month?
Tomorrow, tonight.
Yeah, what is?
Carports.
So when did we?
July 11th. You approved the ordinance.
So the 4-2-3 vote, including mayor, is the vote?
Right. That's when the ordinance was approved by council that extracted the carport language. And the council instructed us to come back with the carport language as is today in a separate section. That's what you have before you tonight.
Okay, so if we have to make any changes on the carport, will you be bringing it separate or...
Yeah, we're not planning on bringing anything to dealing with carports other than this ordinance unless the council tells us to. So it's up to the council. We need this evening, this ordinance, to be passed, so we have regulations in place for carports going forward, starting at 12:01. If y'all decide amongst yourselves that you want to do something different with carports at a later date, you need to give us that instruction and what it is that you want, and then we will run it through Planning and Zoning in the public process and come back to the City Council and have another public hearing, and then you get a chance to vote on it then. Actually, Jim is first, and then Brianna.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to kind of follow up on that mic. So just so I understand too, if this is... If the majority does not vote on it, it doesn't pass, then there's no ordinance in place?
That's correct. There is no carport regulation.
Okay, and so then if we want to make any changes, any amendments, that still can be done to the existing ordinance at a later time?
Correct.
If it passes tonight? Okay. Thank you.
Jim?
I was just going to address something that Mark said. So I know on Sherwood Acres, many of those homes that had the carports that we grandfathered had garages, but because of the age of the home, the garages were so narrow, some of the vehicles, particularly if they had like a special needs vehicle, just wouldn't even fit in it, and that sort of thing. So that was part of the rationale for the grandfathering in that one neighborhood. There may be some other areas in town, but I don't know how many HOAs preclude these. There's like 86 HOAs in town, so I have no idea where they are necessarily or how many of them would preclude this, but I'd rather approve it as teed up so we don't have some kind of carport gold rush. Which probably wouldn't manifest, but you know. I'd rather have something on the books than not. And then if we decide at a later date, you know, we want to revisit it, then we can do so without kind of the democlean sword over our head with this deadline.
John's next.
My question. July 11th, right. The revised version of the carport ordinance was actually brought up, correct?
It was part of the ordinance. It was being proposed.
Right. Why was it proposed? Was it at the direction of us saying, "Come back with it," or was it the staff saying?
I defer to that. Yeah, so the reason why we had included those changes was just simply because we had had the Sherwood Park come forward with their proposed changes. So we were wondering if council wanted the whole city to reflect those.
And at that time, we did mention that if the current ordinance stayed in place theoretically or basically, if you don't have a 20-foot allowance, I guess, or say in the backyard, then you can't... You don't meet the requirement, correct?
Yeah, if you don't have 20 feet.
Right, and that's the reason why you were trying to change that or get that changed?
During the Sherwood Park conversations, y'all had conversations. Right. So they took those conversations, said, "Okay, well, we'll just put this down and give council an opportunity to make a vote." Because you only dealt with it from a Sherwood Park standpoint. You didn't tell us, "Go revise the ordinance." Right.
I apologize for calling it Sherwood Acres.
That's okay.
Procedurally, though, this is kind of a self-imposed deadline, wasn't it? We removed the consent agenda, and we just postponed it. We can postpone it further, can't we?
We could, but there would be... If someone came in and wanted to put up a carport, you'd have no jurisdiction to say no.
Well, it doesn't expire, though, does it? It's not a sunsetting thing.
You have approved an ordinance that does not include carport regulations.
Right.
That goes into effect tomorrow.
Right.
That is the only ordinance in place that had carport regulations. So by repealing the old ordinance and acting the new ordinance, you therefore now have no language starting tomorrow. So therefore, under Bob's direction and y'all's concurrence, here is the carport regulations as is in a separate section. And Bijou, the reason I voted so quickly in favor of it was I wanted to have this conversation with this council instead of it going through as a whole group of the rest of the ordinance.
Yeah, so we are in this situation because the action we took on July 11th, taking the carport language out of it.
That's correct. Anybody have anything else from Mr. Steer? Any other questions? Thank you very much. Any other items on consent agenda? I'm dying to ask a question to Sherry on the exercise equipment at the floor, but I'll postpone that one till offline. All right, moving on to item B. It's a set. Don't break it up. Don't break it apart. So I wanted to have a discussion, and this is nothing but a discussion, an open discussion, on both our liaison assignments as well as our reports. So this is... We talked about earlier back after the election of how everybody counted and got picture of your assignment and so forth. And I just wanted to show you what happened when I took a look at the averages. So if you go to the second page, I actually averaged your votes on each one of the liaison organizations that we have. And this is where you start getting into statistics, and that's why there's a standard deviation. But the bottom line is, there was no rhyme or reason to how these things were picked. I mean, it was, for example, the only one that was reasonably consistent was Metrocrest. Everybody rated it very highly, and everybody was fairly close together in your desire. That was the only one that was consistent. The Arts Foundation was close, but not as close. Everything else was almost out of statistical bounds. So then I took a look at... If you take a look at the third page, these are our service organizations that we fund each year. This is the charitable organizations that we fund. And out of the 16 of them, we only have liaisons to four. Now, I'm not saying that's good or bad. It's just the way it is. And if you want to look at it the other way around, of the organizations that we have liaisons to, we only fund four of them. So I found that very, very interesting. And then the last page was just where the data came from. So I really wanted to go back and ask, you know, do we really feel that strongly about having our existing set up like it is? I think Bijou had talked about... Hadn't you said have term limits or something like that on each assignment? Wasn't that... I think you told me that. No?
No, that was me.
When did I say this?
I didn't say term limit, but this actually came up when Kevin and I talked about this because we were assigned to one. It just kind of felt like that while there are others being assigned to, it just didn't make sense that we're assigned to one.
I agree. This absolutely made no sense.
So, yeah, and it's not because of particular choice that we want to get into, but we just thought it just didn't make sense that two people... You know, of course, Kevin has come to the meetings on his own, probably because his mom made him or something, but...
You know what? My mother really wants me to be, so...
So, but either way, he visited, and Bijou visited Senior Center and so on. But it just didn't make sense to have two for one particular committee and then have others being assigned to two. We just thought that doesn't make sense.
Which one do you want in mind?
It's not that I...
She beat me to it.
And the second thing is this. These liaison assignments, honestly, Kevin and I talked about this. We go to Senior Center, we interact, but the others, is it where you actually interact? Or you're just getting the report and saying, "Here's what they said." We thought if that's the case, is that really being a liaison and being interactive? Or are we just getting the report, just reading off, saying, "This is what they said"? I thought it's more of an interaction like the way we do with the Senior Center that Kevin also thought, but... And that's what I thought the others were, but I was informed that's not the case with a lot of them.
So I'd like to bring out, you know, there's a couple... What I'd like to propose... Bijou?
So one thing that I see missing is CRDC. We appointed two council members to CRDC, and it's not listed here.
That's a...
Yeah, that's one.
That's a board and commission more versus a liaison.
That's not a liaison.
Yeah, because these we can't vote on.
I just kind of feel like that's fundamentally different in the sense that a liaison to me is like outreach to other groups, and it's kind of building our... Or strengthening our network of partners, if you will, but CRDC is part of our purview, if you will.
Yeah, you know, I thought assignments and committees or liaisons.
No, this is specifically liaisons.
Okay.
So one of the things that I was going to propose was that instead of having everyone roll into an automatic reporting every... What is it, three months, four months? Ashley's going to send a note out prior to the time and ask you if you have anything new to report, specifically anything that is newsworthy of the council. You know, is there something pertaining specifically to the city impacting the city directly? Is it, you know, something that wouldn't be normally advertised through that institution's email or website or whatever? And that will give you the chance to say, "Yes, I have something to say." Or you can say, "No, there's really nothing new to report."
All right, would you do that for, like, at each meeting? Or would you still rotate it around, like, today we're going to ask, you know, these CISD seniors in Woben Clinic?
It'll still rotate.
Okay.
So I was just going to say, well, I mean, like, on the CAC foundation, I'm attending all the board meetings. I kind of thought we were supposed to. And I went to a Sunday gathering and had a lot of fun.
Okay.
I was interacting. I was interacting with the Dos Equis and some of my friends. So, yeah, I was interacting.
Well, I'm happy to hear that. So, but, I mean, you know, I think that's a good case. Is there, you know, that's what you're supposed to be doing, but was there anything that needs to be reported back to the council?
I like the as-needed reporting thing. It makes it less rote, and I think, you know, everyone has good judgments to what...
Just FYI, back in the old days, it used to be okay to say, "I have nothing to report." That was a standard... Rather standard, it was more the standard than the not. Because they're, you know, like the school district, they have a wonderful website. All of the school districts do. And they do a really good job of pushing out information.
Yeah, I read the Metrocrest report because they provide me... The assistant they provide me, Coppell residents, you know, how many meals they serve, how many people they're taking care of during the quarter. So that's what I read.
And that's, you know, that's not available on their website.
Right.
Kevin?
You know, John kind of mentioned this earlier, but I would like to see some sort of... I know we kind of get established with our groups and stuff. I would love to see some sort of rotation or, you know, not a term limit. That's not the right word, but like, you know, maybe, you know, maybe you serve for, you know, whatever period of time we determine. Maybe it's one or two years or what. I don't know. I feel like one year's kind of short to kind of maybe build a relationship or something, but maybe every two years, you know, we kind of, you know, we reevaluate priorities on what we want to, you know, what we want to serve on, but you just can't do the last one that you did and move to another one. I think that would be good to make sure that the council is getting equal opportunities to get invested in different parts, different, you know, partnerships, different groups. I just feel like that would be something interesting to explore. And if I'm standing alone, please tell me so.
So if it's not a term limit, it's a limitation of your term?
Just rotation.
Well, I see what you're doing there.
Like, if we've already been on CISD for two years in a row, we ourselves should rank that lower or not choose that as our number one.
Well, and honestly, that's what I did was I was... I had served, you know, the CISD liaison for two years and wanted to change it up, so I still ranked CISD number two for all those that are watching. Love my school district and everything, but, you know, it was like... I've been going to the meetings with John. I was like, "Well, that'd be an interesting opportunity to be that liaison there," so.
So would you guys be okay with a two-year rotation basis?
So I spoke to Kevin earlier about that, and I agree that, you know, it's okay. It's thinking that pretty much everyone actually goes to the meeting and actually interacts. That's the thinking I had, that it's a good idea to rotate and get to know other organizations or, you know, as a committee and have that relationship. And like Kevin said, you know, one person being at one location is good, but rotating and everyone having that relationship is also good or better in a way, so.
Like, I'll tell you, I'll be honest, as far as some of the ones that I serve on, a lot of them is based on, like, when days they meet and what time they meet and what location they meet. So I've had to schedule some of it, but then I do like the idea of... I have tried, I think, most of them in my time to have the opportunity to be able to say, like, I've served as a liaison, and at least I know some of these organizations that we're giving money to and what they do and how they serve our community, right? So there's a balance there.
So just a question. So for CISD, do we attend any meetings?
I watch it. Yeah, I stream it.
I can speak for myself. I would watch board meetings online.
I watch them online.
And then I would sometimes go in person, or I would just call up our trustees sometimes and just say, "Hey, what's going on?" You know. I spoke to trustee today, even though I'm not the liaison. But it, to me, it's just important to have that, have those conversations. But I was not at every meeting, you know. I remember Brad sometimes.
Some of them, they want you, like Metrocrest. I think, like, I served on Metrocrest for several years, and they wanted you there, and that was important, right?
They have a board meeting every three months.
Yes, yes.
And you go attend the person.
But CISD, that's why I've done it. Like, I know that I can watch it online. I can go. I have coffee with trustees and...
So I'm going to throw a little wrench in this one.
Please.
Councilmember Carroll just got elected to a position. Did you nod?
I did.
I think he's stealing.
Yeah, what are you going to do?
I'm chair of the DRMC.
Yay, look at you.
So...
You need to resign.
That would be my only... You're going to love it when Kevin rolls in there. That would be my only ask, is, I mean, like, DRMC, that's a board member. I mean, you're an actual member of the board. And RTC, I guess I'm an alternate. I'm not actually a board member, but I'm an alternate, so.
But you get called to go.
But see, this is, so let me... But this was one that was really clear, the DRMC.
Nobody wanted it.
Nobody wanted it. Don was the only person that voted.
That's because I'm a...
So, you know, this is one that anybody is welcome to be a member of DRMC. It's not, you know, it's not a specialty appointment, I don't think.
It is, actually.
Is it really?
The board is made up of representatives from each member city and everything. So it's actually a board.
Okay, so you are it. So he'd be, you know, that would be one that we would have to...
You can rip it out from under me if you...
You worked so long and hard to get it.
That one, I guess I would just caution, and same thing probably with RTC, it takes a long time to ramp up to understand what's going on in those worlds. So I guess I would caution that two years, I mean, letting someone be on for a while...
Is helpful.
Yes.
Yes.
Just understanding the complexities.
And that one is one, and actually contested this, but being an alternate, you were still given the opportunity to attend on a regular basis.
Right.
Which was great.
All right, we will put together a... We're going to have to go...
Do we have to do anything formal on this?
Not really.
It's kind of a discussion.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I think you're going to put something...
So we'd have to go, we'll have to go research and see how long everybody's been on their current committee and see if anybody needs to roll off.
Well, is that the consensus that's around the table?
I...
I mean, for me, you know, don't fix what isn't broken.
I agree. That's why I was saying, we don't need to do anything.
Yeah, I think, but I will just say that I think the point that John and I are saying that it's slightly broken because him and I are sharing an assignment. And that's just my point is like, and like, not saying you're the new CISD liaison, but I put number two on there, and, you know, like, and it was almost like, that was just... Okay, we get that, and it was just like, I went from having one of my own to sharing one. Again, John and I have a great time when we visit the seniors, and we enjoy that, but it's just, we felt like it was a little broken, just to use the terminology.
But I mean, I wouldn't be, have a hard time giving up one. And I'm not going to speak for Jim, but are you wed to both? I mean, if somebody doesn't have one and they're sharing one...
You can have one, CISD. I love CISD, but you're welcome.
I mean, just all we need is a long discussion, I think, you know?
Yeah, we actually used to share. Mark and I had done this before. Like, we used to share...
CFB, right?
Yeah, Louisville, Carrollton Farmers Branch, CISD was, like, shared.
Oh, like, they were all three together?
Yes.
That kind of makes sense, though.
So we used to do that because we had a lot of overlap on what was going on in some of the schools. For example, just like holidays or start of school or whatever, but we did that at one time, too.
That seems like a lot of work.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, and then if, like, Mark wasn't there, I could report if I wasn't there. if I wasn't there, Mark could report, and it was just, or if somebody couldn't go to a meeting or whatever it might be, but, I, I mean, Kevin, if you're asking for more, I'm happy to share, if that's what you're looking for. Okay.
You can have, I trust in you. I think yours would remind me of the job.
You're the old capitaine of transportation, don't you?
Mobility, mobility dog.
Mobility dog.
I mean, I, I kinda feel like if there's something that really calls to somebody and they really wanna serve a liaison with that group, I don't have a problem with that, if, if, I, I'd like to rotate a little bit over time and just give a little exposure here and there, just because I think it's a healthy exercise, but there may be other people that, you know, really want to, like, dedicate more time to Metrocrest, for example, and if that's the case, I'd.
Yeah, like, I was a Metrocrest representative for several years, but it was a real-time crunch for me because, you know, I'm in the office by seven and their meetings didn't start until seven thirty. Yeah, I mean, so it was, it didn't work for me. That's why I put it, you know, further down the list, so someone else who wanted it could step up. Yeah.
So, by the way, this was not gonna, we weren't gonna change this tonight or this month, this was gonna be a next year thing. I just needed to hear some direction so we can come back with something at the fall retreat or winter retreat. I'm still not hearing a clear rotation, cause I, I know that there are several people that have got, like, the, the R T C or D R M C, you know, you're the only one that really had a burning desire to do that. Quite honestly, when I looked at the list.
You did?
Yeah. Jim, you were the only one that really had a strong, was, was that right?
I had two.
Carol and, yeah, and Mark had two.
Yeah, oh, it was the Dallas College, I mean, nobody marked it down.
Yeah, and I, I admittedly have not done anything with them, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out who to reach out to, so I was gonna give it to Ashley.
But do we even need, do we even need a liaison with it?
Well, I'd like to find out, I don't know. I can't, I can't say no when I've dropped the ball and haven't reached out to.
When they had, like, the, when they had the campus here, that wasn't, like, they've changed, right, the way they're organized, and so I feel like when the campus was here and active, it was one thing, but now that's not the way that they're set up.
Oh.
It has changed.
Right, so it's changed, because now they've got, um, that, that campus that's in Capel is, is, I don't know, it's focused, yeah.
Construction.
Specialty.
It's like the technical.
It's a technical.
Yeah.
But that's cool.
But it's.
It is cool, absolutely, but they're a big part of our chamber, too, I think.
Yeah, I just need to reach out and get, get off the stick, is what they did.
Right.
And, you know, for the seniors, for the longest time, it was just one person, and then Gary would invite people monthly, different council members to attend with him, although he set me up one time on Hula, Hula night, or Hula, yeah, well, not Hula night, Hula lunchtime, it was a Hawaiian thing. He just mysteriously didn't, wasn't able to make it, and I had stuck him in the middle of the door, like. Yes, grass skirt, yes, yes, so.
I think we gotta picture that somewhere.
There is, yes, there is film.
All right, so, so we will do the, Ashley will be sending out a, a query about whether you need to be put on the agenda with the report.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I like that idea, and then everything else, I'm with Mark, if it's not broke, don't fix it, I know you see it as broke, I think what we're saying, several of us are, if somebody has a burning desire to do something else, and we can share, we're happy to share, and I think that's happened in the past, people have switched or shared or done other things, so we can all talk, you can, we can talk about it afterwards, and somebody say, hey, I really like, you know, Louisville I S D, Mark, do you mind if I do that?
I think, I think some of it has to do probably with John and I, you know, just not seeing the precedent of it being shared before, you know what I mean? It, you know, we're.
Yeah, we didn't know.
Yeah.
It was shared before.
So, it just, it felt like, just understanding that there was, that there was, you know, you guys had shared stuff before, that, that's new information to us, so.
Yep.
You and I shared one, didn't we?
We did, and I can't remember what we shared, but we shared something.
I S D.
But I was gonna say, like, North Texas Commission, this is only the second year I've done it, and I feel like two years is about right, C I F C, um, C I S D I hadn't done in years, so that was why I was actually trying to come back to doing some of that, yeah.
Kind of trying to mix it up.
Yeah, I did Metrocrest for a long time, too. I do like that idea, thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else?
Can we, can we keep this?
You may. You may.
It's impressive parchment.
Yeah, this is high quality.
I, I am an Excel expert. I learned the four different types of standard deviations from this.
Wow.
Anytime you need Excel, done, just send it over.
No, no. Oh, yeah, but, but I'm very expensive.
Or you can ask Chat G P T.
I was gonna say, Mayor, there was a time, there was a time that people used to fight over being the liaison for the seniors.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I'm going to.
Because they're so active.
So, I got one other, I got one other little comment, we got a request to support a letter that's being written by an industry consortium to oppose heavy trucks going over eighty thousand pounds, did y'all get the same letter?
Yes.
I got the email.
I got the email, yeah.
So, I came out of that industry, so I know a little bit about the topic, this is a very, it's very polarizing within the, that community, the fleets and the truck operators would like to carry more freight because they can do it for very little extra cost, they basically get to carry the extra freight for free. Unfortunately, we're already exceeding the, the limits of what most pavements and asphalt can, can put up with, we experience that on a very personal basis, that on Beltline, so I'm prepared to support that letter, and it's just gonna take me to respond back to their email, but I just wanted to let you go, know, guys know that that was my inclination, unless somebody had a strong opposition to it. The downside is, this is somewhat in support of railroads, it's a, it's a railroad initiative. Mark?
I'm in agreement with you.
But actually, they write the letter, you just sign it. Dom?
You were, you favored writing the letter?
No, I just to sign, to agree with it and sign it.
Oh, okay.
They're just looking for a bunch of people to sign on with them.
And we feel confident we know all the, I guess, pros and cons or all the ins and outs of it, I guess, I guess that's my, that'd be my only concern, is just not under, you know, putting our name on something if we don't fully understand.
What's that? We don't have this on the agenda.
Ah.
Oh, sorry. So, if you.
Discuss it.
No, he's asking if you have, if, he's gonna sign, I'm speaking for you, I'm sorry, Mayor. The indication is, he wants to sign the letter because he supports it, and he's informing y'all that he wants to sign the letter, does anybody have an issue with it?
No.
If you have an issue with it, it may not stop him from signing the letter, but at least now you're informed.
No discussion.
And I'll be happy to address what I know about it, which is more than the casual observer.
But if you're signing it, doesn't mean I have to sign.
No, you don't have, no. I'm, I'm signing it on behalf of the, as mayor. A lot of times, a lot of times, I don't even tell you about these things, but this is pretty public.
I'm worried about it.
All right, thank you very much, thanks for the course correction. The time is seven oh nine P M, and we are recessed from work session, and we'll enter into sit regular City Council at seven thirty.
Seven thirty?
I know I do.
Good afternoon, everybody. The time is 7:30 PM and we will move into the regular session of the Capel City Council. As a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or the public hearing must sign the appropriate register, which is located outside the council chambers, and list your address. This afternoon, we have Rika Yader with the Allies Interfaith Group here to give our invocation, and after that, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Rika?
Oh God, as we come together, we call upon you to bless the congregation with your bountiful compassion and immeasurable love. As you hold the victory over evil in this world, grant us wisdom in knowing that we are pursuing nothing else but your purpose for our lives. Give us a heart to hear your voice. Oh God, recalibrate our intentions, draw us closer to yourself if we get waved from the path of righteousness while we serve your people, as you alone are always our unwavering protector and shield. Let your peace and kindness rain down on us today as we seek you more than anything else. God, may we be blessed with your divine presence here with us today. Open our minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom. Open our spirits so that we may know your leadership and guidance. And open our hearts so that we may receive your generous and abundant love. Amen. Om Shanti Shanti Shanti.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Item number six is a proclamation for the Capel Nature Park, or Friends of the Capel Nature Park, and I believe I have, we have a few of them present with us, and I'd invite the group to come forward. Whereas the Friends of the Capel Nature Park is a nonprofit organization that was officially chartered in 2003 as a 501(c)(3) with a vision to build a nature park in Capel through volunteer effort and funding. And whereas through the dedication of the Friends of the Capel Nature Park organization and volunteers involving the community, the Capel Nature Park has grown from an idea into a 66-acre nature park with more than two miles of dedicated trails, two outdoor classrooms, three diverse ecosystems, an observation deck, and a bird blind. And whereas through continued dedication to create a positive experience in nature for all children in Capel and to educate the community about their natural environment, the Friends of the Capel Nature Park did not stop their momentum with the Capel Nature Park, but continued a grassroots effort to build an educational facility, which is now known as the Lew Dugan Biodiversity Education Center. And whereas for the past two decades, the Friends of the Capel Nature Park have contributed more than 800 hours annually to trail maintenance and restoration, provided biweekly guided hikes and monthly environmental education classes to adults and children, and have reached thousands of those children through their education program and field trips. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim the celebration of the 20th anniversary of the Friends of Nature Park, and I encourage all citizens to celebrate by visiting the Biodiversity Education Center and Capel Nature Park to spend time experiencing nature. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capel to be affixed this eighth day of August 2023. So, I'm not sure exactly who's going to receive this. Thank you. Did you have something you would like to say?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm Dr. Linda Cook. I'm the current president of the Friends of Capel Nature Park, and I want to point out that we have some members of our board and some past members of our board who've joined us tonight who were part of the original board 20 years ago. On the original board, I was brand new in my role as Director of Science for Capel ISD and served on the board for the Friends of Capel Nature Park. We also had Farnita White, Betsy and Bruce Wilcox. Tara Ferguson was a seventh grader and volunteered with the whole idea of building a nature park, and she had to give a presentation to city council, to the park board, even to the state park board, to talk about the ideas that we, that the students had for putting in a nature park. Tom Elwood was on our original board. He's here with us tonight. He helped Eagle Scouts build bat houses, which we still have at our nature park. And then Rochelle Cowan was a teacher of sixth grade students, and her students volunteered 20 years ago to help come up with some of the design ideas that you see now implemented at the park itself. And then later, 10 years ago, our treasurer Jane joined us, and then Tom Baumgartner, Baumgartner is in charge of all of our trail maintenance committees and the work that they do. We also have with us are people that actually work for the city who support the Friends of Capel Nature Park and their work at the Biodiversity Education Center. So we have Cynthia and Callie and Jonathan, and we have a real great partnership going on. So I want to invite all of you to come and visit the Capel Nature Park. We have a lot of great things going on. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any comments, or Ms. Brianna Hosea Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all so much for being here, and I am so happy to be here to celebrate the 20th anniversary. I remember, because I had moved here in 2002 and so, and was elected in '05, and I remember like just the Friends of Capel coming and with the idea. I think I remember your presentation, potentially, but all that to say is for it to go from an idea to come to fruition and to see how much it's evolved and grown and how it's become kind of a place to see and experience for Capel. And especially when we talk about like Discover Capel, that is, you know, at the top of the list that we want people to come and experience, as well as our own citizens and our own students. And so I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done, and I know many of you have been on the board, like you said, from the very beginning, and that you continue to serve and continue to see the growth of the nature park. Thank you for your time, your commitment, and your vision.
Well, thank you very much. There was a presentation given to us about a month ago, and I realized there's a whole section of trail I have not hiked, so I promised to do it, but the weather's going to have to cool down just a little bit. So, thank you very much for your service and such a great center that we have out there. So, thank you very much. All right. Item number seven is citizens' appearance. I do not have anybody signed up to speak, so we're going to skip the text there. Item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally improved in a single motion. Any item may be withdrawn and considered separately. The items are, have been revolving through the screen. Counsel, is there any desire to discuss or pull an item from the agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Member Neville's?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Seconded by Counselor Member Carroll. All in favor?
Walker, Heena Hosea Smith, Carroll, Neville's, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is with Ms. Tien present. Consider approval of a maximum proposed tax rate of 0.491818 for the 2023 tax year, and to set the public hearings on the budget and proposed tax rate for the regularly scheduled city council meeting on August 22nd, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Ms. Tien?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. The agenda item is being brought before you for you to consider approval of the maximum tax rate of, for the 2023 tax year, which is the 23-24 fiscal year. The item is proposing a maximum tax rate of .491818 cents and is a record vote, which is now required by Texas Tax Code Section 26.06, regardless of the tax rate being proposed. This record vote is required to be included in the notice of public hearing on the vote for the tax rate, which must occur at least five days prior to the public hearing. The notices will be posted or published in the August 12th edition of The Rambler, which is the city's paper of record. It will also be included in the August 13th publication of the Gazette, and that says an additional communication. The public hearing and the meeting to vote or to adopt the budget and the tax rate is scheduled for August 22nd of 2023. This item is not a vote to adopt the tax rate. It's only a vote to publicize the tax rate will not exceed .491818. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Tien? I've got one, and this is very self-serving. What is the, how far back does this go as our lowest tax rate since when?
I think 1984.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think this is a wonderful example of a really good, wonderful city staff performing, you know, throughout, you know, some really rising, gosh, the interest in inflation rates have been just unknown in the last two decades, and to be able to come in at a lower tax rate is phenomenal. So, anyway. Okay, okay. So, thank you very much. Counsel, any, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion. Counselor Member Hill?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number nine.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Member John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Walker, Heena Hosea Smith, Carroll, Neville's, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and consider a resolution granting a distance variance of 241 feet to St. Anne's Catholic Parish for a temporary event from the 300-foot prohibited requirement for the on-premise sale of alcoholic beverages, with an address being 180 Samuel Boulevard, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Ms. Owens?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Again, my name is Ashley Owens, and I serve as the City Secretary. The item before you tonight is a public hearing to request a 241-foot distance variance for St. Anne's Catholic Parish. Specifically, this is for their upcoming carnival. St. Anne's is located at 180 Samuel Boulevard, and last year was the first time that St. Anne's requested to sell beer and wine at their annual carnival, and city council also did grant that variance. Dates for this year's carnival will be September 8th through September 10th. The times for the carnival will be Friday beginning at 6:00 PM and will end at 11:00. Saturday will be from 10:00 to 11:00, and then Sunday will be from 1:00 to 6:00. The graphic for you tonight is an aerial site plan of St. Anne's with a 300-foot radius. As you can see, there are two schools and one church within 300 foot of the location of the carnival. Section 6-16-3 of the city's Code of Ordinances prohibits the sale of alcohol within 300 foot of a church, public or private school. Capel Early Care Education is located at 103 Samuel Boulevard, and that is located within, actually located 59 feet away from St. Anne's. Thus, the need for variance and why I'm here tonight. The request for variance is temporary, and if granted, the distance variance will begin at 12:01 AM on Thursday, September 7th, and it will go through 12:01 AM Monday, September 11th, 2023. St. Anne's is required to receive approval from local officials in order to obtain their TABC temporary event permit, and Section 6-16-4 of the Code of Ordinances speaks to council's discretion to grant those variances. This is a aerial view of their, the site plan of the carnival. The area that is circled in red is the, look, is called the sports bar, and that is where the wine and beer will be sold. The quester has been informed by the vendor that patrons are allowed to mingle and roam on the premises of St. Anne's with their alcohol, but they are not allowed to leave the site with their alcohol in hand. Again, I would like to remind counsel that this request for variance is temporary, and if granted, will only cover the times and dates of the carnival. Notice of public hearing was placed in The Rambler on July 29th, and as of the posting of this agenda, my office has not received any feedback. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And members of St. Anne are in the audience.
Excuse me. Counselor Member John?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any calls with issues with the variance last year?
So I called, well specifically, are you reference, what are you referencing exactly?
With the alcohol sales.
Okay. So I did speak with the police department, and there were no incidents related to alcohol last year during the carnival.
And what they're asking today is actually pretty much exactly same as last year, correct?
It is exactly the same as last year. Yes, sir.
The question I had also was maybe even for the applicant. I know the hours are 6:00 to 11:00 Friday and so on. Is the alcohol, are they going to be selling alcohol during the entire time that the carnival is being operated, or is it a specific time, especially on a Saturday? Is it tend to 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM also?
That would be a great question for the applicant.
Good evening. Thank you, first of all, for letting us be here. The community's always been a great supporter of ours, as well as the city staff, so we're in our 30th year. So I know I'm not answering your question, but I wanted to at least thank you for that. So the answer to your question is, yes, we are going to sell beer and wine only during the time the carnival's open. So it would start early. There's college football games, things of that nature, but our busiest times are typically the evenings, which we would have the biggest crowd involved, so.
Could you state your name and address and your position to the record?
Yes. So my name is Ken Whistler. I live at 1510 Pebble Creek in Capel over in River Chase. I am a 20-year member of the Carnival Committee in our 30th year, so I'm a new guy still, according to Jim. So they put me in charge last year. I've been on the Finance Council, been a member of the parish since 1995, and they asked me to oversee it with it being the new first year. I was on-site the whole time while we were open. We didn't leave it to volunteers. I was there the whole time to make sure everything went well and coordinating with our vendor, the professional vendor that did the serving and managed it. So I was on-site for that.
I was just talking to him earlier, and I was saying that I was impressed with the crowd. I know it wasn't just Capel residents. I think there were a number of people that came from outside, so whatever you guys were doing, I guess it worked, so.
Correct, and we're very fortunate that the community's again embraced it through the years, and we welcome that. We want people to come. It's, it's not just our community. It's, it's the entire Capel community, and again, the city staff's been a big supporter of that through the years, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Counselor Member Neville's?
I just want to say thank you guys for, you know, coming up and speaking. I had an opportunity last year in the sake of research for the city. You know, I investigated the sports bar just to make sure that it was, you know, an appropriate use, and I felt like it was very respectfully done, and it was managed very well. So I just wanted to thank you guys for keeping that very professional, and I thought it was a good addition to the event and didn't take away from anything, so that was really good. But just extensive research was done, so just wanted y'all to know, okay?
We appreciate your research.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Thank you all again. Hope to see y'all out.
This is a public hearing, and we did not have anybody signed up to speak unless there is someone that has something else to say. Seeing none, Ashley, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Any comments by the council? Counselor Member Heena Hosea Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve item 10.
Thank you very much. Item, or do I have a second from Counselor Member Neville's? All in favor?
Walker, Heena Hosea Smith, Carroll, Neville's, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is the city manager report with project updates on future agenda and direction from work session. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Just a few items this evening. The Moore Road Boardwalk, work continues. Progress is being made. They're, matter of fact, they're making a lot of progress. The contractor's almost completed with the grading of the ground back to the original grade and making the west sidewalk connection to the boardwalk, and the fence contractor is making progress on the railing. The Duck Pond Park improvements continue. The contractor is working on the concrete channel on the north end of the park, and they are also now focusing on the ledge stone footer on the south end of the pond. They are at about 30% complete, and reminder that the park will remain closed during construction. Thwait Park, the contractor's making progress there also. We are about 50% complete on that project. That park too is closed. South Belt Line, the contractor continues working on the medians and landscaping. The final phase, Hackberry to 635, should begin in the next coming weeks, and will be between four to six months to complete that end. Moore Road pavement improvement, those pavement improvements have been complete, so that will be out of the way before the start of school. Dart-McArthur track work this week. They should move to the inside lanes being opened, which will help improve traffic over there tremendously. The, if you've been driving down North Denton Tap, you've noticed near Victory Place, we've had some work being done over there. We had a failure in the storm drain. That pavement work will be completed by this week as well. And then, not that you're out during the middle of the night driving on Dividend, the contractor began working on crack ceiling Dividend and will continue to do the work at night and have the lanes open by 6:00 AM each day. And Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Item number 12 is the mayor and council reports. As I hope everyone is aware, we have entered our, the second stage of our water conservation plan. It is called Water Watch. As a result, utility customers may only irrigate on specified days, and please visit the city's website for further information. We have been at our cap of 18 and a half million gallons for several days, and that is when we go into stage two. The City of Capel is requesting resident feedback. The city's Ford Board has released a survey, which can be found on our city's website, to gather feedback about housing options for Capel's active adults and residents over the age of 55. This survey will be open until September 1st, 2023. In addition, I had the privilege of attending a delegation of over 30 members of the Texas, North Texas Commission, which went to Washington DC over the week of July 24th through the 27th. Our congressional members discussed their issues vital to the continued success of North Texas, and these issues included the economic strength, workforce development, health, infrastructure, and more. 12 members of Congress talked to our group, some of whom included Beth Van Dyne, Pete Sessions, Colin Allred, Mark Vesey, Jake Elsie, Keith Self, and Ronnie Jackson. Now, the interesting thing was, so these guys have such a varied experience. Jake Elsie, for example, was an F-18 fighter pilot, and Ronnie Jackson served as the presidential surgeon or doctor in the White House for three different presidents. So their stories were fantastic. In addition to the congressional representatives, it was also a very special honor to, honor to meet our two senators, Senator John Cornyn and Senator Ted Cruz, who both came to speak to us. It was very interesting to listen to their perspective on the inner workings of Washington and what they're doing in spite of the very partisan politics. And that can go on for a long, that discussion can go on for a very long time, so I'll just leave it at that. It was a very, very nice trip, learned a lot, took away a lot, and the North Texas Commission did a wonderful job of putting the group together. Item 13 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Counsel, anybody have a no council action or deliberation permitted. Counsel, anybody have a PSA? Seeing none. Item 14, there was no action from the executive session, so there being no further business before this council. We are adjourned at 7:55 PM.